Thank you. I hereby open the meeting of the Committee of Citizen Involvement. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Landin.
Present.
Vice Chair Salazar.
Present.
Commissioner Coe Vila.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Present.
Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner McGinley.
Present.
Commissioner Buck.
Here.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. During the Planning Commission regular meeting at seven o'clock this evening, we will have business from the audience, which is a time for anyone to speak to the Planning Commission on any subject that is not otherwise on our agenda for this evening. Let's call the Agenda Item Community Engagement Plan. Turn the time over to staff.
Good evening, committee members. Can I get a nod or just can you all hear me okay? Want to do a sound check? Thank you. I will take a moment just to recap while we're here, introduce a couple of things and then just get right to it. So this evening, staff seek this committee's feedback on Willamalene's Community Engagement Plan for its comprehensive plan. And we're ultimately looking for your approval on the Community Engagement Plan as presented or approval with modifications. I'm excited to say that we have some of the Willamalene team joining us this evening. Christina Bo, who is managing the plans update, and Eric Adams, Willamalene's Planning Parks and Facilities Director are tuning in. Christina will actually be the one presenting this evening, but we're all available for questions at the end. And I'll just quickly touch on how this fits into the city's interests and while we're here for Willamalene's planning effort in the bigger picture. So this has to do with the world of comprehensive, long-term land use planning and Willamalene's comprehensive plan is actually part of Springfield's overall comprehensive plan. It's their plan is its own, our own element of basically a chapter of the overall Springfield comprehensive plan. And their work is most directly aligned with Oregon statewide planning goal eight. So because of this, we'll eventually come back to you instead as the Springfield Planning Commission through the legislative plan amendment process. There's much more staff look forward to about this project, but for now I'll turn things over to Christina to share more about Willamalene's perspective and the Community Engagement Plan.
Thank you, Monica. Can you all hear me okay as well? Yes, great. Happy to be here tonight. I'm going to share my screen. And hopefully that goes smoothly. Is everybody seeing one main slide?
It's good.
Excellent. All right. So as Monica said, today we're
Sorry.
You are seeing two slides. Well, that's unusual because that didn't happen last time.
No. Yeah, I think we're good.
Are you seeing the the next slide?
Willamalene Comprehensive Plan, yes.
Yes.
Christina, would it help if I shared mine and you just tell me?
Did that change anything for you? No, okay.
We're seeing your notes and everything else. So if you want to, I don't know if you want that to be on the public.
Dealing not. So let me stop sharing here for a second and I'll try again one more time here. Huh, it automatically does that. So I'm sorry, I don't use Zoom that often. Let me try. Okay. Did that change it?
That's full screen. Yes, that's that's different.
I don't know why that mattered, but we are here. Okay, moving on. So 2012 was the last time that we updated our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan is a document that we update on a 10-year basis. That's part of our administrative policy internally for Willamalene. But this is a really important document for us as a district. It guides the work that we do. It guides our priorities and it helps create a strategic approach for our funding strategies going forward. And most importantly, it helps make sure that we are aligning with our community's desires and needs in the community of Springfield. And so we're not getting off track with what the community wants to see. And that's obviously a big part of our community engagement. So tonight I'm going to run through the scope of the project and the timeline, talk about how we're going to support the project at a staff level and then also spend most of our time talking about the strategies for community engagement. So this is the overall project scope of work. It was created by our consultant team that we have hired to help support this project. It helps provide a little context for how community engagement is happening throughout the entire process for this project. As you can see on the top, we've already gone into some of the initiation phases of this project and we're just about to jump into the needs assessment, which is where the core of our engagement is happening with the community. We're also going to have a lot of parks and facilities analysis tasks happening behind the scenes. That's a lot of research, GAS analysis and trends analysis kind of happening. Once we've collected everything we learn, then we start moving into the next phase of the project, which is looking at what our priorities are and our vision is for the district going forward, looking at our financial strategies. And then hopefully we'll have a draft plan complete by June of next year. So just as a note, community engagement will be happening through the entire process for the most part, but the core of what we are doing is happening this summer, fall timeframe. We'll look at that closer in a minute. These are the consultants that have, we have hired to help support this, Barry Dunn and some sub consultants. Barry Dunn was previously known as Green Play LLC for anybody who's familiar with them. And then this is the internal Willamalene staff team supporting the project. Apologize, it looks a little bit blurry on my side. But basically the intent of the slide is to show you that we do have internal teams. We have a project team and advisory team that kind of spreads across the organization. So we can get lots of perspectives and oversight throughout the process and make sure that we are meeting the district's needs. We're also going to be engaging with City of Springfield staff and Lane County staff on a monthly basis to make sure we are also aligning with the city and county's needs as well. So like I said, I want to spend most of the time tonight talking about the strategies that we are planning as part of this process. This is a diagram that I use to kind of guide us through that. And so just to orient you a little bit, the strategies that we're proposing are on the left side. The rough timeline is on the top of the diagram. It's a couple months short because we will have just document being refined and finalized there those last couple months. I'm going to populate these areas as we go through it. And so ones that show up in green are efforts that are going to be led by our consultant and then the ones that show up in orange are ones that Willamalene is proposing to lead. So our consultants came to us with a list of engagement strategies that they were proposing and they're all great. We're going to share those tonight. And then Willamalene said, in addition to those, we would like to do some additional outreach. And so this helps differentiate which ones we're leading and which ones they're leading. And then overall, you see these two big circles on the diagram and that's just identifying kind of critical benchmarks in the process. So engagement that's happening during the needs portion of the timeline are identifying like what the needs, gaps, barriers are in the district. And then later we get into more of the prioritization of what people are asking for. So the first one, and I should also mention that these are not necessarily in sequential order. I apologize for that. But I will try to guide, I will try to make it make as much sense as possible. The first one is online engagement. So we have already launched our initial phase of our landing page for this project. It's going to be at willamalene.org/future. And this will be a landing page where people can come and learn more about the project. They can sign up to get updates on the project and they can learn about upcoming engagement activities that we will be undertaking. We'll also have some of the products, the deliverables throughout the process available for the public to view. And two critical parts of our engagement are going to be surveys. So our statistically valid survey is one that will be done by a sub consultant, RRC Associates. And that one is going to be launched in July. So we will learn some, we want to hear from the public a little bit first about what their priorities are, what their they think the needs are in the district. And then we will use that information to create a statistically valid survey. It will launch in July. We'll mail it to 2,000 to 3,000 people across the district. And then we will be looking for results that indicate a 95% confidence level in what we're hearing. And then once that closes, we're going to open it up, send it out to the public for an online survey and let everybody contribute their feedback through an online survey. We're also going to do that in the fall and winter time. This probably more like winter time for that second survey. Coming up here pretty soon, we're hoping to do a group of focus, cluster of focus groups meetings with the public. So we are currently recruiting for those. The first ones will be open-ended and more of an open discussion about what people's desires are. The second round of focus group meetings will have more focused topics. So through the process, we're going to learn about identify things that we want to learn more about from the public and we can use those to talk about things like transportation or other questions that we have for people about our parks and services. We will also be having stakeholder interviews happen here in the next few weeks. There are four kind of league agencies that we have identified to host, have these meetings with. So City of Springfield, Lane County, Springfield School District and our Board of Directors as well. Those will be facilitated by our consultants. We're going to have several town hall meetings throughout the process. And these will just be open opportunities for the consultants to give the public an update and be transparent about the process, let people know what they're learning through all the engagement that we've done so far and through their analysis and then share draft recommendations and findings later in the process. These town hall meetings will be hybrid meetings, so people can attend virtually or in person. And we will have translation available and ASL interpreters onsite for those meetings as well. Internal staff engagement, I don't need to talk much about that, but basically a survey and a series of meetings with our internal staff to make sure we're learning from people who use our facilities from the inside. And now we're jumping into some of those additional strategies that Willamalene has added to the scope. I'll start with that second one. Actually, the project pitch is really an opportunity for us to go out and connect with different agencies and groups in the community, nonprofits. And as many opportunities as we can to get out and invite people to come and participate in our process, let them know that what we're doing, how important this is to us, and please participate by coming to willamalene.org/futures and learning more about what's upcoming in the next months. And then in the summer, we're going to be hosting pop-up events. We're calling them, and those are basically tabled events where we will have takeaways. We're going to have some fun ways for people to engage and we can take those, they'll be mobile. A mobile kind of pop-up table event that we can take to different sites. So some of those will be Willamalene events. We have plenty to choose from. But we also want to make sure that we're targeting non-Willamalene events and that so that we can really try to access people who aren't currently using our parks and facilities and let them know that they can also participate in this process. In fact, we really want them to participate in this process. This last one is the external advisory groups and listening sessions. And these are conversations that we want to host with around certain topics. And we want to invite the people who have a specific lived or technical professional experience that they can bring to the table to help inform these conversations. And these conversations are, we already know what some of these conversations will be, but we expect that as we go through the process, we're going to find other things that we may want to host a listening session around. So some of the initial ones that we've identified include natural resources, accessibility in parks and facilities, cultural responsible design for parks and programs. And then understanding how to better establish relationships with indigenous people in our community. And also barriers for Latinx and other Black Indigenous and people of color when they access our parks and programs. And then last and last, last but not least, excuse me. Are our partner and board updates. So these will be ongoing and as needed, but are we know right now that our board is going to receive quarterly updates from us and also the City of Springfield and Lane County are going to get kind of an end of needs assessment update as well as a pre-adoption summary before the plans come up for adoption. And then just to close the loop here for you, we identified some audiences that we wanted to target through our engagement. And so general, I just want to close the loop on how we are going to be doing that. So we have our general public, which we can reach through our pop-up events, town hall meetings and our surveys, also of course our online engagement. Then we have these targeted groups that we identified early in the process and also happen to be groups that are identified in this, in our kind of state guiding document, the statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Sorry, I started my allergies today. So we have statistically valid surveys, our online survey. And then our pop-up event, our project pitches and our listening sessions. And that's really been the impetus for us adding these extra events so we can access those targeted groups a little more specifically. And then many community partners in Springfields can can be connected with through the strategies shown here. And of course, staff. And before I wrap up here, I just wanted to highlight that we are trying to integrate considerations for diversity, equity, inclusion throughout as best we can. Some of the considerations we identified so far is to translate all written materials, provide assay and Spanish interpretation at public events, provide childcare, provide hybrid options for meetings to use partnerships that we've established already in the community and use them as voices to help facilitate or recruit participation in our events. And then consider the facilitator and also the environmental considerations such as where we're hosting these meetings. Is it accessible? Is it comfortable? So we are thinking about those things right now. And then also incentivizing these, reimbursing people for their time for participating in especially our focus groups and focus conversations, listening sessions. So that is that. And we're really excited about this project. There's a lot of people at Willamalene who are very excited and we'd love to hear any suggestions or feedback you have for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any commissioners that have any questions for Monica or comments on the plan? Commissioner Coe Vila.
Sure, I'll start things off. It looks like a pretty, pretty well put together plan. As the commission for, the Committee for Citizen Involvement, oftentimes what we're presented with is a list of options about directing the outreach. Now, it seems as if your consultant might be doing a lot of that, but a lot of times we talk about like PSAs and radio spots and things like that for one thing. And then another thing that we usually do as the CCI is we usually try to direct the outreach into things like, I know you have like older folks, youth, diversity, diverse folks, low income, et cetera. Oftentimes we, we say, you know, maybe there should be something that would be do on parks should have an outreach towards like say the bicycling community. I'm trying to think of some other things, runners groups, environmental, non-government organizations, et cetera. So I'm not really seeing those in the, in the plan. Is that stuff that will be generated by the consultant? Are you looking for that kind of input from us?
I can try to answer this, Monica, if you have anything you want to add or Eric as well. We do have, just addressing a couple of things that you came up, I understand we're not your typical plan, maybe that you see, we might be approaching this a little differently. So thank you for just going with the flow a little bit on that. But we do have a community engagement staff team at Willamalene who is going to be overseeing all the publicity of these events. And so they're the ones who would be posting all the public announcements. And all of it will be vetted and coming from that department at Willamalene. And then you also mentioned specific user groups. And so we have been meeting with the advisory, part of the role, the advisory committee is to help make sure that we are reaching all of the user groups that may have interest in this process. And so we have been talking about that for months now and have quite a robust list of partners that we would want to integrate in the process. And so for example, our focus group, design of our focus groups. We have created an application and we have a set of ideal characteristics and users that we would like to make sure contributing feedback through those focus groups. So when they fill out an application, they identify, you know, the types of activities they like to participate in. They let us know some of the demographic information and we can look to make sure that we are having representation from each of those interests at the table for the conversations. But there, that's definitely all important considerations that we have been talking about through the advisory team and the community engagement folks at Willamalene.
Other question or comment?
I can dovetail a little bit off that. I don't want to take Eric's thoughts though. So Christina and I both are looking to any other recommendations you might have for specific groups. So I think that's appropriate tonight. And wanted to mention that the Springfield Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is a group that we're going to coordinate with to make sure gets a chance to provide feedback. We didn't share that verbally until now. So that's one thing on the list. But tonight we are interested in your perspectives of who else to consider. That's all I've got to add.
Thank you. Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Commissioner Landin. I want to also just commend, commend you guys on a very well put together and well thought out engagement plan. It looks great. Two things. First of all, I, I was a little hazy when you were talking about the time, timeframe. I know that the process is to kind of gather all the information, come up with a proposal that you think reflects that. And then, you know, bring that to the public and ultimately come back through the commission here. And I'm just curious what, what you think the timeline for gathering that to come up with a project maybe. And then also I was going to say, this probably goes without saying, you asked for, for feedback on, on other groups. And I know that through the Springfield Rotary, Eric and I have worked together. But that's a group that I would make sure was on your list. I know that we've, that the Rotary has done projects with Lemalene in the past and hopes to do so again. So that would be one for your list.
Excellent. Thank you. Trying to get my slides to go backwards. Not having luck on this here. There we go. Okay. So just so we have a visual here and we're talking about timeline. So most of the engagement, like I said, is going to be happening spring and then we have our survey in the summer and information gathering happening through this timeframe. And in the fall is when we kind of start to gather those preliminary ideas of what our initial recommendations might be for the plan. And so based on what people have said. And so we plan in the fall to come back out to the public and have them review and make sure that we're in line with what, what they've recommended. And then we would also bring out the draft plan in the spring to the public to review before it's adopted. So that would be the timeline for, I guess, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Gill.
Thanks, Commissioner Landin. Thanks for this really great plan. This is such an important part of our community and we already have really great parks and recreation resources, but I think the opportunities are really exciting when the community can be engaged in these things. So Willamalene's openness to this broad participation is, is really exciting. And, and I think there are resources out there to do lots of good stuff. And sorry for the glare of the sun. Sorry, keep trying to rotate. I do have a couple of ideas about the outreach, particularly for the Latinx community and for for folks who use Spanish a lot as one of their primary languages. That there's some real consideration for that promotional information to go out, particularly like Commissioner Coe Vila mentioned on the radio, but Spanish-speaking radio stations. There's a good track record of that being effective in other communities. And also consider not only written translation of your documents, maybe the longer ones, but that kind of FAQ documents. Consider some short audio, visual, video versions of those. Because we have a fairly significant community of folks whose primary language is not Spanish, but they use Spanish as their secondary language. And so reading it is also not the best way to reach them. So a short video that goes over those FAQ visuals can be a more effective way to really provide information and the opportunity for engagement rather than having to read it written. Not that you shouldn't do the written, but that's another option out there that, that tends to work pretty well. It's also very shareable on social media stuff. Which is a good way to do that kind of engagement. And then I wanted to throw out a few organizations that I didn't see in the written thing that I suspect you're already thinking about, but I'm going to say them just in case. So one of them is Ark of Lane County. Who's engaging a really broad group of folks right now. And partnering with Food for Lane County, which I know is another of your partners that I would think will be engaged here. N double A C P of Lane County, of course. Grand Ronde, the tribe itself, but then also the Shifan Native Youth Center. And then also be sure to think about the tourism organizations. I didn't, I don't remember seeing them on the list. They might have been there. Often the Chamber of Commerce is included, but Lane County Tourism. And even hotels and those kinds of folks might be interested in this. Again, thanks for your really good work.
Thank you. Excellent suggestions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you, Chair. And thanks Christina for that presentation. Really thanks to all the Willamalene staff for yeah, starting to think about ways to engage the public. I especially love to see those questions in the Community Engagement Goals, especially I always love seeing that question of who is least likely to engage and how can we reach them? I think that's key to not just trying to get the low hanging fruit of how do we engage the people who are using these facilities more? How do we reach out to the community and get more engagement from other folks who are, who are least likely and figure out why they're, they're least likely to engage? I think for a specific recommendation, one group that comes to mind is called the Border Boys Bike Club, which is a fairly informal, social bike club of which is a fairly informal, um, social, um, bike club of, um, um, primarily Latinx bikers, but, um, also, um, their goal is to engage, um, diverse populations in bicycling. And I think that leads to just, I think, uh, a push. Social media is so important and especially because there's so many informal groups that connect over social media, that Border Boys Bike Club. They're, they're not a nonprofit to my knowledge. I think that's just an Instagram account and a Facebook page. Um, but it's a local group that gets together and there's so many groups like that, um, that are, um, based around, um, people getting together and using outdoor facilities like Willamette provides. So I think, um, just diving into social media, um, a lot could be helpful. And, um, yeah, and just wondering, I think this, in terms of, of outreach plans that we see, this is kind of unique in terms of the, the user group isn't just Springfield citizens. There's people come from all over, especially from Eugene to come use the parks in, um, Springfield. And just wondering what that, that the plan is for engagement outside of just Springfield? Um, if there's any, any ideas for engaging folks, um, in the larger metro area and even beyond.
Um, our main focus, and Eric, you're welcome to chime in on this too. Um, our main focus is folk, is focusing on Springfield primarily because that's our tax base. That's who's funding our parks and facilities. So that will be our priority through this. And I think there's going to be opportunities, especially through some of the pop-up events. You know, we have people come from all over to our facilities, um, to our events that we host where we would have some of those pop-up events happening. Um, and the survey, we certainly, whenever we put surveys out, we get a pretty broad regional response. Actually have people applying from Texas and California to be on the focus groups right now. Um, so, um, yeah, it does tend to travel on its own when we do our engagement. Um, but, uh, but I would say that we are focusing on Springfield because that's technically who, who we are serving. Yeah.
I, I would echo Christina's comments in that we, we certainly want to make sure we're, we're placing an emphasis on the immediate Springfield community. But, uh, Commissioner Salazar, to your point, certainly recognize that Willamette serves a broader regional community and, and to a certain extent, you know, even statewide, uh, we often have groups come all the way down from Portland Metro and, and up from Medford in that area to use Splash in the summertime. And, uh, certainly want to hear from, uh, those members of the, the broader community as well as, as we look to revise and update this 20-year plan. Um, that online survey, uh, that will be open up, open to the entire public for use later in the summer. After the statistically valid survey would, will provide a fairly easy way, uh, for, uh, everyone, anyone really to provide input to the project. Uh, town hall meetings, which will be held both, uh, in person and virtual in a hybrid format. Uh, and then certainly as we move through the, um, plan, um, creation and, uh, revision and adoption process, various public hearings that will take place, uh, for, uh, the Willamette Board of Directors, um, City of Springfield Planning Commission, and ultimately the City Council as we get into the adoption phase.
Uh, Commissioner Quavo?
Uh, yes, uh, just a quick follow-up regarding, uh, Commissioner Salazar's comment. Um, is Alton Baker Park not, um, at least like the portion that's, um, the west of I-5, isn't that like shared jurisdiction between Lane County and, or is it Eugene and Springfield that it's shared jurisdiction on? So that, that would be a reason for an outreach, I believe.
So west of I-5, Alton Baker Park is, uh, specifically within City Eugene's jurisdiction is managed by Eugene Parks and Open Space. East of I-5 is, uh, is Willamette's ownership. To my knowledge, Lane County no longer has any direct involvement with, um, management or, or ownership of those properties. Subsequent to them transferring it to us in the mid 90s, which you're, I'm sure you're probably familiar with how that unfolded. Yeah.
Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. I want to echo, um, what a few other, uh, fellow commissioners have mentioned of appreciating, um, reaching out to those that we may not initially think about. And I think that we provided some really good feedback on groups of, um, of groups that I've hadn't even thought about, to be quite honest. And, uh, when we heard just a couple of moments ago about, um, families from, or people from Medford area, just as a generalization coming up and using Splash, that just prompted me to think. Um, and maybe this is something that has been talked about, uh, but potentially having semi-permanent, uh, signs, um, at all of the Willamette parks where people could have, even if it's just a QR code to a survey to explain what we're talking about. Um, so that we can find and, and really, instead of asking community members to come where we are, if we can go to where our community members are and really provide them an opportunity to see it. You know, website or social, because those are great if people are looking for them or are following those social posts or emails or, or what have you. But if we're right where, um, those that are utilizing the parks that, um, if I, you know, if my neighbors are taking their family to the park, but they don't have direct contact with Willamette as a district, um, then they can provide their input right then and there when they're, the kids or, or whomever is playing on the park. So that just might be something to think about is putting in those signs. I don't know what the feasibility looks like as far as cost or anything or, or manpower and getting that out there. Um, but just an, an idea to really have an easy way for boots on the ground.
Commissioner McGinley.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I echo the commission, um, with just praise for, uh, how comprehensive this public engagement plan is. It's really exciting to see in-person events being possible. And, um, I'm a bit, big advocate of meeting people where they are. So love the idea of the pop-up events in line with Commissioner Bergen's comments about signs. Um, we saw some really successful, uh, sign strategies through the Wetland and Riparian, um, inventory project that Monica, um, just recently conducted by putting QR codes to surveys and project information along multi-use paths. So I think along with, um, using your facilities, uh, like, uh, Splash, um, we saw great success there. And I, I think that could be a strategy that's used again, but overall, great job and I'm supportive of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Gill.
Thank you again. Uh, Commissioner Bergen's idea also reminded me, and I don't think this was on the list, but, uh, our amazing library is super well-used by a big variety of people. So hosting a similar sign at the library, I think would go a long way to engage.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, Commissioner Quavo.
Uh, last item was, uh, just came up in my mind was, uh, reach out to the faith communities. I know that a lot of them are awful active and, uh, I, I'm sure they're big park users too, so.
Nice, nice. Appreciated the library comment as well. Um, any other comments or questions? Okay, at this time, are we ready for a motion to adopt the community engagement plan? Commissioner Salazar.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move to adopt the community engagement plan in the agenda packet for this item as attachment one.
Second.
A second. I'm sorry, did, did we have a second?
Oops, sorry. That was me seconded.
Thank you very much. Can we get a roll call for votes?
Quick, quick question. Would this be, uh, including the suggested amendments that the, that were brought forth by the planning commission?
Somebody from the Willamette one who addressed that?
I didn't hear any specific amendments. Those would have to be more specific than the general feedback that was given. So the motion as made would be approved, to approve the document that is in your packet. If someone wishes to make specific amendments to that document, um, then you'll have to, to move to either amend your, to move to amend the motion at this point to specify what those specific amendments would be, preferably by page number or some other reference. Um, otherwise, um, you have also, um, in the past, provided staff input on how to execute their, um, identified strategies in the plan without changing the plan itself. So, um, those are your options procedurally. And then if, um, Willamette and staff want to weigh in or have anything to add, I can turn over to them.
Commissioner Quavo, uh, comment?
Uh, yeah, that would be satisfactory as long as it's understood that we've made some suggestions and we would appreciate that they'd be incorporated in the outreach.
Okay, Commissioner Salazar.
Yeah, I was just gonna echo what Commissioner Quavo just said. I think we don't need to go as far as, uh, micromanaging, um, the exact, uh, verbiage of changing the verbiage of the attachment. I trust, um, staff to take our feedback into consideration as they craft this plan.
Okay, we also have one more comment, uh, from, um, Eric Adams.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to confirm that the, the suggestions, recommendations that the, uh, commission has made this evening are easily, uh, integrated into the strategies we've already proposed as part of the plan. And certainly appreciate and value the feedback that was presented to us tonight. So thank you very much.
Been a good session. Uh, Monica.
Thank you. This helps with direction and I want to emphasize I've been taking very detailed notes in addition to our recording. So if something was needing reference, we can pull it up as far as your input insight recommendation. So easily pulled up.
Christina, Christina Bowe, is that?
Yes, Christina Bowe. Um, yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for those suggestions as well. And, and we definitely will integrate those, as Eric said, um, and let you know that, uh, my email is on that website. So as you think of more down the line, you're welcome to send more to us. Um, I really appreciated the ones you offered so far tonight. Um, and this is the first time that we have come, that I'm aware of, that we've ever come to, um, you all with one of our engagement plans. And so, um, this has been wonderful to know that, um, you guys can support us in our projects and we can be partners in this way as well. And, um, I think, appreciate all the feedback we've gotten.
We appreciate that. Commissioner Salazar, I'm going to come back to you and ask us to, uh, if you're still ready, um, go ahead and present.
I'm ready for a roll, a roll call on the motion.
Uh, okay, um, I think normally city staff, uh, does the roll call?
Sure, I'm happy to. Uh, so the motion on the table is to adopt the community engagement plan presented by Willamette this evening for their comprehensive plan update. And so I'll call a roll call vote, starting with Chair Landon.
I.
Vice Chair Salazar.
I.
Commissioner Quavo.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
I.
Commissioner Bergen.
I.
Commissioner McGinley.
I.
Commissioner Buck.
I.
So approved unanimously.
Right. Thank you. That's the last on the agenda item for our six o'clock, uh, meeting. We'll adjourn the CCI session and meet back for the regular session at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Chair, um, I believe, uh, we had talked about if we had time, uh, in our pre-meeting yesterday, that if we had time at the end of this, uh, session before the work session, I was wondering if we could get a brief training from Sandy. Sandy, are you available to, eh, eh, still able to do a training on, on how we mark items as red? In Springfield, Oregon speaks.
Sure, I'm available if the commission would like to do that now.
I think that would be fine. You also, I think we're going to remind the commission about, uh, getting the, what do you call that acronym? You know, where you have to register with the state annually. Maybe toss that out in the same thing.
Sure. Uh, so I will go to Springfield, Oregon speaks. Um, and can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, uh, the platform that we have been using over the past, um, year and a half or so, where we have the information for the meetings. And so what Commissioner Salazar was mentioning is that, um, I need to move something out of the way so I can get to it. All right. So, uh, a couple of things I want to point out. One is that we have created this page for planning commissioners. Um, pretty soon I'm going to be adding another page for the historic commission. So things are going to be looking a little bit different. I'm not quite sure how they're organized, but anyway. Um, right now the for planning commissioners tab is at the bottom. If you click on that, then you'll see the schedule for council meeting attendance and then other meetings that have come up. Um, if there's other content that you want us to add here, we can do that. And then to get back to your homepage, you just click on the Springfield icon up at the top. But commissioners, uh, can all go in here and log in. And so if you click here, it's going to ask you for your email address. I'll put mine in, um, and then a password. I have to think about it. Um, so you're going to see something different than I am here, but anyway, this is how you get in. Um, but if you go to the site, uh, for, um, meetings where we've had comments, um, if I come to somewhere, we may have had some. Um, well, you can go view archives if you can't see past, and then you can go down further. So for instance, the zoning map amendment for Catholic community services that you had recently. When you click on here, there, you can see that there are comments. Um, so in this case, there were two comments. And then you, what we see down here is that four out of the seven planning commissioners have viewed this comment. Um, so when you, you'll see here, I can approve or unapprove these because I, I don't see it quite like you do because I'm a staff, you're a commissioner. So when these comments come in, I can approve them. These have been approved. And now they're available for you to see them. So when you go in, when you log in, and then you'll be able to click to whether you've read them or not, then this will change, um, how many planning commissioners have read those comments. Uh, anything else that you want to highlight, Commissioner Salazar, since I don't have quite the same access you do?
No, I think that's great, Sandy. It just, I, I wanted to bring that up because, um, I think you may have noticed in, um, some of the comments that we've received recently, that people are noticing how many folks are marking comments as red. And it looks as if, um, commissioners are not, um, reading the comments because they're not clicking that read button. I trust that you're all reading the materials that were, that are being presented to us. But, um, just want to encourage you to click that read button because the public can see that. And if it doesn't show, it looks like a majority of the, or a, a large minority of the planning commission isn't looking at the comments that are coming in.
Commissioner Bergen, did you have your hand up?
Um, yeah, I was just going to say that I know, um, in a lot of, in some cases, depending on if I'm on, um, my city iPad or my personal computer, when I'm reading those, it's not going to show because I, I don't log into city information on my personal computer. So I am probably one of those, not necessarily in this one that we're talking about here. Um, but just a hundred percent am reading all of them and, and just because we're reading it as, as, as if we're public, um, commenters because of the inability or the, because of not logging in on a personal computer, if that makes sense. So, um, apologies if that has caused any strife for any of the public or fellow commissioners. Um, I might be one of them on a rare occasion. So.
Commissioner Buck.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Salazar and Sandy for, uh, for pointing this out. I, I had not been logging in to read comments. I'd been, I'd been reading them. Um, so I will start doing that to mark them as read. I, uh, I'm sure that at some point along the way I was, that was covered in the training and I did not recall that step. So I apologize for that. Uh, but I am reading them.
Christina Cruz.
I did just want to let Commissioner.
I did just want to let commissioners know that logging into the website doesn't raise the same issues around public records and communicating from like a personal email address that I know that I weren't I warn you about in terms of using personal email addresses. If you are logging in, you you may have a variety of reasons of not wanting to log into a city account from a personal device. I just wanted to provide the information that doing so doesn't create a a public records concern in the same way that I know that I've given you lots of advisory communications around using your personal computers to store public records or using personal email accounts to send planning commission emails or those types of things. So this is a little bit of a distinguishable case if that's a reason you were hesitant to do that previously.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Buck, your hand is still up. Go ahead.
No, I just forgot to put it down. I apologize.
Hey, do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I adjourn the CCI session and we will meet for the regular session at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much for everybody's input.
You you won't need to.
Sorry, Sandy.
You won't need to do roll calls since you're all still here.
I don't think we're going to need it. I agree with you there. I hereby open the regular session of the Planning Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. In a few minutes, we'll have business from the audience, which is a time for anyone to speak to the Planning Commission on any subject that is not otherwise on our agenda for this evening. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we will take now take business from the audience. As a reminder, this is a time to speak on any topic that is not otherwise on the agenda tonight. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if you're joining by phone. Please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. When you are called to speak, called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Christina.
Chair, I just want to add the Main Street Facility Plan is on the agenda for deliberations only tonight. So the Planning Commission will not be taking further comment on that item. Any public comments to the Planning Commission about the Main Street Facility Plan would not be considered as part of the commission's deliberations. If you wish to speak on that topic, you may testify during the City Council public hearing that is planned for May second or submit comments and writing to the City Council or both. The Planning Commission will explain the status of that item further when they get to that agenda item.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm not seeing any hands for public comments. Just checking to make sure. No, I'm not seeing any. So we'll go ahead and call for agenda item for the main.
Chair, I will say that I do see one hand raised on on someone's screen. It looks like Joni Moog.
All right. Joni, go ahead.
Hello. Thank you for taking a moment to to hear hear me out here. My name is actually Joni Mogstad, and I'm temporarily in Springfield on 51st Street. And I just wanted to comment. I called our police force the other day because I couldn't get to my house because the street was blocked. And I thought that it would be their responsibility to get traffic moving. And they said, no, it absolutely was not their responsibility and that I needed to find it a way around the blockage. So I talked to some of the neighbors and they said when this happens that they do go around. They take the freeway out to Main Street and back down Main Main Street to 51st and then turn back in to get to their houses. And it's because of parents picking up their children who have blocked the street. And so if you've got traffic going both ways and the traffic lane is full of parked cars, there's not much you can do. But just sit there and wait and wait and wait and wait and wait. And the the gal on the phone told me that I could find another way around, like turn down another street in the neighborhood or something. And there that really isn't true. You really can't do that. Once you're stuck on that street, you're stuck on that street. And so if it's not a law enforcement kind of an issue, then it must be some other kind of an issue. And I'm willing to go talk to the school and ask them to provide more parking for their parents. But other than that, I don't know what else to do. So I thought, well, golly, I've got an opportunity to talk tonight to you guys. And so maybe you know the answer. So that's what I want to just give you for consideration is that this happens every day to somebody on this street. And I don't I don't think people should be allowed to park in the street to wait for their children at the expense of other people who may need to get out to go to the hospital. Fire engines might need to come through. Who knows? We shouldn't just have to sit there and and wait it out while they're waiting to pick up their children. I you know, I'm I'm sorry that this has happened. But I I don't want it to keep on. So that's what I just wanted to share with you tonight.
Thank you. Any others with for during the period of the public comment? Commissioner Quavo.
I'd like to respond to Ms. Mogstad. I believe besides the school district that a good place to also go speak to folks would be at the what's called the SPAC, the Springfield Police Advisory Committee. And they have meetings every week that are up on Springfield, Oregon speaks. You can get in touch with them through the police department. But I think that you should explain your your problem to them as well. Thanks. Thanks for your input.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the audience who would like to speak? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'd like to go ahead and call for agenda item, the Main Street Facility Plan, which will be presented by Molly Markarian.
Evening. I'm going to share my screen.
Point of order. My apologies for interrupting. Point of order. I think we need to begin with conflicts of interest.
Chair, you're muted still.
Well, that's not terribly effective. You are correct. Thank you. I'm also going to read a prelude to that. The purpose of this item is to discuss the commission's recommendation to the City Council on the Main Street Facility Plan. A public hearing was held on February 15th. The record was left open for additional public comments to the Planning Commission until February 22nd. Any comments submitted after February 22nd will be provided to the City Council for their public hearing planned for May 2nd. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for the Springfield Planning Commission to complete deliberations regarding whether to recommend the City Council approve, approve with modifications, or not approve the Main Street Facility Plan. Before we begin our deliberations, this is where we declare conflicts of interest and I'll just roll call Landon. To my knowledge, I have none. Commissioner Salazar.
I have no potential conflicts of interest.
Commissioner Quavo.
I guess ex parte contact to a certain extent. I have spoken to the city attorney about this, but basically, we've gotten a lot of emails that have come through the city directed towards the Planning Commission. So those are basically things that I guess weren't in the public record. I also did attend a forum for people seeking the Ward five city council position and Main Street was brought up in that in that forum, both positive and negative. I don't feel any of those discussions will affect my decision, but I did want to bring them forward. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Bergen, Commissioner Gill, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gill first.
Real quick, I just want to let the commission know this is a legislative decision making process, so there's no requirement to disclose ex parte contacts. But if you have information that influences your decision, that's not clear on the record, then during your deliberations, definitely feel free to share that information with the commission. But because the city is an applicant and this is legislative, procedurally, it's not necessary to declare information outside the record that you're aware of or contacts you've had outside of the planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Bergen.
Oh, sorry. Before you move on, I didn't I held off for Christina, so I have no conflict of interest. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, keep trying, Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. Third time's the term. I do not believe I have any potential conflicts of interest. I'm I am a practicing an active patrol in town. But nothing that affects me right now.
After you've been called on five times, Commissioner McGinley.
I have no conflicts of interest.
And Commissioner Buck.
I'd like to disclose for the record that I am insurance agent operating in Eugene and Springfield. I don't believe anything to my knowledge has created a conflict of interest on this topic.
Thank you very much. I have no conflicts of interest that I am aware of. We'll turn the time now over to staff for staff report.
Good evening. I'm Molly Markarian, Senior Planner and the City's Project Manager for the Main Street Safety Project. As you all may recall, this is a collaborative effort with ODOT. And ODOT's project manager, Bill Johnston, is joining us tonight. I also have several project team members with me, Brian Barnett, the City's Traffic Engineer, Michael Liebler, City's Transportation Planning Engineer, Emma Newman, Senior Transportation Planner, and Laura Lynn Spiro, the DPW Communications Coordinator. Tonight, we'll be reviewing the Main Street Safety Problem, the planning phase process to date. Also going over the toolbox of solutions that are recommended in the draft facility plan. I will highlight the community input that has already been addressed in the draft facility plan. Note the written comments from the Planning Commission public hearing and our staff response and review possible modifications for Planning Commission consideration and then open it up for your deliberations. Springfield's Main Street is consistently ranked as one of the most unsafe city streets in Oregon based on the severity and frequency of traffic crashes. ODOT and the city must address this problem to save lives, reduce injuries, and lessen property damage due to crashes. The purpose of the Main Street Safety Project is to select infrastructure solutions that will make Main Street safer for people walking, biking, driving, and taking transit. The selected safety improvements will provide for the movement of goods and people, support the economic viability of the corridor, accommodate current bus service and future transit solutions, and complement safety education and traffic enforcement. If you recall, the safety evaluation of existing conditions was based on the most recent five years of crash data available at the time of the evaluation, which was finalized in February of 2019 and covered the years 2012 to 2016. In September of 2019, our project team prepared an addendum that evaluated the 2017 crash data and partial crash data from 2018 and 2019, which indicated similar trends or patterns as the 2012 to 2016 data. We have heard a desire to see a data dataset that would reflect updated conditions on Main Street, such as the reduction in the posted speed limit and the installation of enhanced pedestrian crossings. Since that 2019 addendum, ODOT has finalized the 2018, 2019, and 2020 crash data and made it available for use. Our project team recently prepared a second addendum that compares corridor-wide 2017 to 2019 crash trends to the 2012 to 2016 trends to determine whether notable changes in crash patterns have occurred since we developed the toolbox recommendations. Overall, crash trends observed between 2012 to 2016 are relatively similar to those observed between 2017 to 2019. Although overall reported crash frequency decreased in recent years, the number of crashes resulting in injury or death remain consistent through 2019, as have the most predominant crash types, rear end and turning movement crashes, as shown in the graphic. The original findings are still relevant and safety solutions developed over the course of the planning phase address the predominant safety needs that persist along the corridor. Rear end and turning movement crashes continue to represent approximately 70 to 80% of all crashes on the corridor. Of note, the proportions of bicycle and pedestrian crashes both increased by 2% in the most recent analysis period. The recommended safety upgrades are focused on eliminating risks from the resulting highest frequency and severity crashes, including angle, turning, and rear end crashes, most often occurring at intersections and driveways. The crash types most likely to be prevented by installing roundabouts and raised medians remain the primary contributors to fatal and severe injury crashes on Main Street. Anecdotally, the addendum also presents 2020 crash data for the corridor, though notes it is strongly influenced by changes in travel patterns associated with the COVID-19 pandemic and thus would not be useful for guiding crash mitigation decisions. Sorry, the screen is not moving. There we go. The Main Street Safety Project builds upon several prior planning studies focused on safety and infrastructure improvements on Main Street. If you recall, in fall of 2016, Springfield City Council supported moving forward with the study of safety medians on Main Street and directed staff to investigate a suitable application of safety medians for Main Street, evaluate impacts to funding business and property owners, and coordinate engagement with the Maine-McBay Transit Study. The facility plan process was seen as an opportunity to get to a decision about which major features the community and the City Council supported being included in a long-term design concept for Main Street. I'd like to share an example of another Springfield corridor with a long-term conceptual vision and phased implementation due to funding being highly variable and unpredictable, Glenwood and specifically Franklin Boulevard. During the planning phase, we identified the types of upgrades desired for the corridor to advance to the next phase. In the rendering, that image depicts the components that would be included in the street design and was paired with a design concept that identified intersection type and location. During the implementation phase, we developed the design and engineering plans for construction. As shown in the engineering design image on the screen, it depicts exactly how the street will function and the site-specific location of street elements. The project team for the Glenwood and Franklin Boulevard projects engaged with the community throughout the process. There was broader outreach at the planning phase and more site-specific engagement during implementation. Over the past nearly four years, the Main Street Safety Project Team has built upon several prior planning studies, as I mentioned earlier, to develop and refine the recommended safety solutions for Main Street based on community input, technical analysis, and decision-maker feedback. The city and ODOT carefully considered community input that acknowledged that there is a safety, a serious safety problem on Main Street. It is the responsibility of ODOT and the city to address this problem. The conceptual solution presented in the Draft Facility Plan is sensible and responsible. And in the future, when a more detailed design is developed, the city and ODOT will continue to engage community members and make adjustments as necessary. And similar to the Glenwood example, I showed um, what's recommended for the Main Street Facility Plan. Implementation is a phased approach. In developing the Draft Facility Plan, the city and ODOT attempted to balance various competing interests and objectives. Input received from community members clearly indicated that the community believes it is important to address safety concerns on Main Street. Other input emphasized minimizing the impact to businesses and supporting economic development along the corridor. The recommended Toolbox of Solutions presented in the Draft Facility Plan provides flexibility in terms of applying different types of solutions to different segments along the corridor, not a one-size-fits-all approach. The flexible approach also provides simplicity and feasibility and is intended to provide the balanced solution that the community desires. The primary tools in the Toolbox are roundabouts, raised medians, and long-term street cross-section upgrades to enhance the safety and comfort of those walking and biking on Main Street. I'd like to reiterate the guiding principles outlined on pages 71 to 74 of the Draft Facility Plan that would apply to raised median design. I'd also like to note the pairing of roundabouts and medians for functionality and safety. If you'll recall from prior presentations, when combined, we could see a 48% crash reduction on the corridor. You have received many written and oral comments on the Draft Facility Plan in association with your February 15th public hearing. The project team has followed up with many, including with those who have desired to meet so that we could better understand and consider their concerns. It is important to consider those concerns in the context of the overall input and interest in the Main Street Safety Project over the past four years. The Draft Facility Plan responded to community input with specific changes to address concerns received throughout the process as outlined on pages three to seven of Attachment One, the briefing memo in your packet. While many topics were addressed, some examples include pairing roundabouts and medians, including numerous breaks in the median, minimizing right-of-way impacts to businesses, not compromising emergency response on the corridor, and addressing concerns regarding the recommendations that this would make the safety problem worse. Staff also responded to the written comments received for the Planning Commission Record as noted in Attachment Two, specifically Exhibit E of your packet. There are a lot of overlaps with the topics the community has raised over the past four years. However, the recent comments have surfaced some additional concerns and ideas. Based on those recent comments, our project team has identified possible modifications to the Draft Facility Plan for the Planning Commission Consideration. And that's noted on page seven of Attachment One, the briefing memo. We have also updated the misconceptions fact sheet, and I'm hoping that someone else on our project team can put a link to that in the chat. I don't expect you to read um, all the text on this slide, but I have it here for reference during your deliberations. As, as I mentioned, based on the public comments received recently, our project team has identified possible modifications for the Draft Facility Plan for the Planning Commission to consider during your deliberations tonight. I'd like to clarify that any modifications recommended by the Planning Commission tonight would not be actually incorporated into the Draft Facility Plan prior to the May 2nd public hearing. However, an explanation of the changes requested by the Planning Commission would be forwarded to the City Council. And depending on the outcome of both the Planning Commission deliberations and the City Council public hearing and their deliberations, any changes would be made at that time. And now I'd like to turn it over to uh, Brian Barnett uh, to conclude our staff presentation prior to your deliberations tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Molly. Uh, you Commissioners, you have heard Molly provide a comprehensive overview of both the safety plan's content, the community's content, uh, comments, and also our staff's response to those comments. The plan provides a well-reasoned and thoughtful approach, providing safer street while supporting additional community values and interests. We have a responsibility to be aware of others in our environment when traveling on our streets. We all rely on one another to look out for each other to the best of our abilities, but mistakes happen. And reducing the opportunity for mistakes and the consequences of those mistakes is our responsibility to all the users of Main Street. We've all had moments when traveling on Main Street where we've looked away from the street. Perhaps we reached for something on the passenger seat or looked at our phone while we were walking. Or sometimes something else may have distracted us. Sometimes, we or others on the street may make errors in judgment. And it only takes a split second of unintended inattention or being distracted by someone else's innocent action for someone's life to be further altered, not only affecting them, but also us, their family, their friends. While there's no guarantee of complete safety on our streets, the infrastructure solutions recommended in the draft plan, as we continue to modify it based on public input, would improve safety significantly on Main Street. These solutions will help travelers be in less compromising situations and help them focus more on the street and their surroundings. In return, property damage will be less costly, the severity of the injuries will be reduced, and most importantly, lives will be saved. The need for this plan is clear. Main is consistently ranked as one of the most unsafe arterial streets in Oregon, based on the severity and frequency of traffic crashes. Portions are in the top 5% or top 10% worst crash locations in Oregon. The aim of the Main Street Safety Project and its plan is to select safety improvements that will provide for the movement of goods and people, support economic viability of the businesses in the corridor, and complement ongoing traffic safety, education, and enforcement efforts. And ultimately, make Main Street safer for people walking, biking, and driving and taking transit. This now concludes the staff presentation, and we're available for the commission's questions. Thank you.
Uh, I have a question, Chair.
Chair, I don't believe your sound is working.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just go ahead and ask, ask the question. Um, I saw the uh, project estimate and is the, I just went through it roughly and it looked like it's roughly 130 million in today's dollars. And that is not including any inflation factor uh, for the 20-year project timeline. Is that a correct uh, statement?
That's a correct statement. For all phases over, could be more than 20 years. Commissioner Buck.
Yes, thank you. Um. Uh, in your presentation tonight, you, you compared the crash data from the two different time periods at the beginning um, and based on percentage. And I didn't see or hear if you noted it, was the overall number of crashes uh, equal? And if, and if not, which I imagine they are not, how significant a difference is that? Since we're talking about percentages, I, I think that that's a question I had. I mean, I, I have some other questions that I think I'll get to later, but um, just for right now, I'm curious about that one.
I don't have a direct answer to your specific question about the numbers of crashes, but the proportions of crashes are quite similar to what they were previously. And the numbers of crashers, I believe, are not much different. But I can't say that with absolute certainty. I don't recall that fact.
Then there's three years of data versus five years of data. Um, and so there were fewer crashes overall. But as Brian said, proportionally, it's pretty similar. And we can, um, if Emma um, could put a link to the addendum, um, it is, it was posted to the website today. In the chat.
Okay, I believe the Commissioner, uh, or that Chair Landon may be needing to reboot in order to re-engage his sound. Um, so in the meantime, I can act as facilitator if he needs to turn on and off. Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. Can staff refresh my memory of when um, the speed was reduced on Main Street? When I'm looking at um, the chart, that was just posted, uh, page three of the link that was just posted. Um, what year that was, from 40 down to 35.
Um, is it not listed in the addendum?
I haven't seen it, and I'm just looking on first glance. I just didn't know if staff have that offhand.
I believe it was 2017, but um.
That's, that's approximately correct, yes.
Thank you.
The addendum states 2016. And that is on page uh, top of table one, post-speed limit reduction.
Molly, I was wondering if we could see um, for a few moments, the second to last slide.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gill.
Thanks, Commissioner Salazar. This isn't related to the slides. So if you're wanting to comment on this or others, I can hold off because I have different questions, so. But I didn't see anybody responding, so I can hang a couple minutes more to see if people want to address this, or I can ask me other questions.
I just wanted to see, give Commissioners a chance to look at these um, potential modifications. Um, I'm not sure if anyone has any um, deliberations specific to these items. I think for my part, um, I think it could be helpful to include more language in the fourth bullet point around um, right-of-way acquisition, what that process looks like, especially because um, concerns around right-of-way acquisition have been um, brought up by the, by, by public comment that we've received. If no one else has any deliberation.
Could Brian mute? Um, I'm hearing his typing.
My apologies. Uh, I do have information available to answer Commissioner Buck's question, if that's desired.
Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. Uh, I'm looking at figure one in the uh, addendum uh, on crash information. And uh, the crash data is from 2012 through 2019. Um, there are total numbers of crashes, and then there's a breakdown between fatal and injury crashes and property damage only crashes. Uh, before I read the numbers off to you, what I can say is that uh, there is a reduction in property damage only crashes. And our consultant analysis indicates that as of January 1, 2018, the reporting threshold uh, of crashes increased from $1,500 to $2,500. So that may attribute to why some property damage only crash rate uh, numbers have gone down. But here are the numbers. Um, I'll, I'll give an approximate total, and then I'll give you the numbers for injuries and fatalities. For 2012 and then moving forward by year, about 148, 130, 115, 120, 135, 110 for 2017, and um, 95 for 2018, and then finally about 105 for 2019. So there is a uh, a downward trend across that uh, time period. I will note that this is a seven or eight-year time period, and there is always a natural fluctuation um, of any sort of statistical data. And so let me now mention the fatal and injury crash numbers. 2012, 78, 2013, 67, 2014, 55, 2015, 71, 2016, 83, 2017, 67, 2018, 68, and 2019, 67. So, not a lot of um, that, well, I can't identify a trend. There seems to be more fluctuation between 2012 and 2016, and then 2017 through 2019 are static at 67 fatal or injury crashes per year. I hope that's responsive to your question, Commissioner Buck.
Thank you. That's very helpful, Brian. I appreciate you looking that up for me.
If there are no other deliberations on these um, potential modifications for consideration, I think we can, you can go ahead and close that slide. potential modifications for consideration, I think we can, you can go ahead and close that slide, Molly, and we can go to, um, Commissioner Gill's comment.
Please, Commissioner Salazar, um, I have a couple of, of questions. Um, mostly related to what the next steps look like. If this is approved through the planning commission and then city council, uh, and into those design phases, so um, the the so the part, there are design phases that will happen. There are grants to be applying for. So, um, to sort of explain a little, if, if one of you could explain a little bit, how you apply for a grant and if it's for that engineering planning, do you need to know in advance, uh, what you're asking for? Um, you know, which comes first, that public process that we say will happen in the design development phase? Before you apply for the grant or after the grant, or does it depend on which grant it is just so I can better understand the public engagement part, um, in, in those pieces? And then I will have a follow-up question after that.
Molly, I can take that one. Your, your commissioner Gill, your question is astute in that there are different grant programs and they have different formats and formulas and how they proceed. Let me start by describing the one I'm most familiar with and has done the most good for safety, uh, in Springfield over the last number of years. And that's called the All Roads Transportation Safety Program, or ARTS. And that program is one in which the state looks at city, county, and state roadways, looks for the places with the highest potential crash numbers. And then they apply different, um, mitigating approaches. In our example, medians, roundabouts, um, illumination, pedestrian crossings, et cetera. And then they look at what the benefit is in terms of crash reduction, injury reduction, fatality reduction, and then what then the cost of construction is. Um, and when I say cost of construction, I mean, the total project cost of the design, the right-of-way, the utility relocation, the physical construction of the work and wrapping that up. That is a, what's called a jurisdictionally blind, i.e. it doesn't matter who's applying. Um, and, um, jurisdictionally blind, um, benefit cost ratio kind of approach. So that which has, it, it doesn't matter what the cost of the project is, but it's the ratio of the cost of the project relative to the benefit that's derived. That type of program is one that is really driven by the numbers. And it's, there's not a lot of influence that any jurisdiction can have to say, we're most worthy of this money. I mean, we do have a good relationship with ODOT in working through the projects. And they, they put the projects in the top of the funnel and we have touchstone points as it moves down the funnel to final funding. When we get to the, you have been selected for funding phase. That's when then when we would begin our public outreach with, this is the project that has been funded. And so this is the activities that are going to occur from point X to point Y. And this is what it would look like in broad terms. And then we would have a conversation with the individual property owners and business owners, residents who are on that, that particular street frontage. Now, if we have a Main Street facility plan, safety plan in place and adopted, that then provides us the guidance that we as designers would need to develop a good plan, good construction plan. If we don't have a Main Street facility plan, then we don't have these guiding principles on how to take care of the businesses, how to interact with the residents, how to take care of property owners, how to achieve the safety outcomes that are desired. Those kinds of things wouldn't have this framework to work from and make those kinds of choices. The project would still proceed, but it would proceed without the benefit of what this plan can provide. I hope that touched on all your points.
Uh, yeah, I think so. That was helpful. Thanks. So as a follow-up, and, um, this might be a question for Christina. Um, a lot of people have provided comment through this, this process, and I'm wondering if it's, if it's legal or possible for those comments to be included in the future public or considerations of those specific site plans so that we don't lose people if we miss them in future outreach or something like that? Is there a way that that this information can be included in those later processes?
The, um, later process will include a NEPA analysis, uh, either an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement, which includes outreach and impacts. And that is regulated by ODOT rule. And I don't know the answer to that question. But I do know that the best way to, probably likely the best way to reflect that community input is through what is binding and mandatory in the facility plan. Um, and so if there are specific provisions on what that future project development that goes through the NEPA process should look like, um, then that could be adopted into the, should be adopted into the facility plan. So the intent is to have a toolbox of solutions that reflect the community input. Like as Brian explained, that forms the broad basis for that NEPA decision-making to then funnel down through the targeted outreach that, um, adheres to the, either the environmental assessment or environmental impact statement requirements. And one of the, um, possi-, one of the, um, staff items that was identified that could, you could recommend the council implement before they adopt the final facility plan is just more explanation of what that later process looks like that, um, is required to go through before construction, if you're using federal funds, um, which is the most, like, one of the most likely sources of funding for this, for these construction phases.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Buck?
Um, yeah, so I have a, a handful of, um, of things that are kind of weighing on me with this, and I, I suspect that, Commissioner Quivola may, may address some of them as well. He, I appreciated his position paper, um, and the staff responses to that. Uh, I, I guess the two of the hangups that I have with this plan are, while I understand, um, the correlation between the tools and the problem, um, and I very much appreciate that with roundabouts, you know, they create, create continuous flow, but they reduce speed. Um, medians, uh, take away the, the left turn and and those can be very dangerous. And I absolutely appreciate those. But where, one, one of the things that we've heard, quite clearly from business owners is, uh, the removal of, you know, of having to widen the road impacts their physical space. That's, that's a concern to me. I mean, I understand one of the goals is, is, is making, making sure that we're not reducing, uh, economic viability here and impacting businesses. And so to me, that, that's a conflict that I still wrestle with. I don't see how you're going to be able to take that space in front of businesses and not impact them significantly. And then we've heard that. And also, um, how roundabouts and, and, and the combination of median would, would still allow for the facilitation of the, the vehicles that need to access businesses. Um, we've heard from Roseboro, for example, about their log trucks that need to get in and out of there. Could it be done with a roundabout potentially? Uh, but, um, since we know that that, since we know that there's going to be a roundabout as proposed in this plan at an intersection where those, those vehicles are going to be turning on a regular basis. I'm unclear as to, as to how that would be facilitated in a, in a safe way. So, you know, for me, it's really important to protect the businesses that are along Main Street. And, and th- those are, those are huge considerations for me. The, the safety is obviously very important. I don't think anybody's truly disagreeing with that. But when we're talking about taking part of the business properties, to, to me, that's a huge ask. And I am failing to see, um, how that how the economic, uh, impact is, is going to be mitigated with this plan and and, and that's just where I'm stuck. Uh, so that's just putting those things out there and and it's fine if you wanted to hear from, uh, Commissioner Quivola, because I imagine some of the things that I just brought up there, he's going to also bring up and I, and I can appreciate that as well. So those are just some thoughts that I wanted to put out there to, to staff that I'm still struggling with. How to wrap that around? Because if our job is to recommend to the city council that they should consider adoption of this, I just need to be really clear on that before I'm, I'm able to, to, to feel good about that. Let's just.
Chair Landon, may I, uh, may I respond or would you like to move on to Commissioner Quivola?
Please do. I think we'd like to hear the feedback. Yes.
I also have information to provide in response, Brian and Chair.
Excellent. Um, I'll, I'll address the roundabout question first and perhaps Molly can talk a little bit about, um, phasing of the project and how that might impact, um, your question about, the business impacts and the right-of-way purchase that would be, uh, associated with what you've described. So first of all, with roundabouts, we have, um, two multi-lane roundabouts in Springfield presently, Minor Parkway, uh, MLK Parkway and Hayden Bridge. And then we also have the one that's on Franklin, which is really two closely connected roundabouts. Uh, but I think of them really as one. Um, both of those roundabouts, um, have been designed so that trucks of virtually all sizes can navigate through them without driving over curbs, without running over landscaping and without hitting any traffic signs. Or, first of all, Oregon law requires all drivers to allow the truck to go through a roundabout without being beside that. So there, those signs have been posted on those roundabouts saying, do not drive beside trucks. That's the official language in the law. Uh, or the sign that I'm, I, I put up. So there is, and, and for example, in the Parkway Roundabout, I'm more familiar with it. So I'll say this. There is one portion of the Parkway Roundabout that is a single lane. That's that very top northern portion. That, that lane is at least 16 feet wide. It has one to two feet of shy distance to the curb to the north. And then there's also a truck apron that adds additional width to the south of that lane. So from curb to curb, it's at least 25 feet. Uh, let me rephrase, at least 22 feet, but I think it's more like 25 feet. I read the, uh, the, uh, comments from, uh, Brian at, uh, Roseboro. I also read one from another trucking company in town. Um, and I am very familiar with their interest and their concern. And I'm also very familiar with the ability to solve the problem as long as we know what their largest truck is, what its characteristics are. It can very easily be designed to accomplish that. In fact, one of our design, uh, preferences, and I won't call it a standard because it's not absolute. We want to be flexible in how we design, but one of our design preferences is to allow two standard-length tractor trailer rigs to drive side by side in a roundabout and have no problem. Now, that means that the inside lane will, the, the truck will be using the apron for the off-tracking of the trailer because that's, that travels in a narrow or a shorter radius than the tractor does. We've all seen it, how the trailer swings to the inside. And then the outside lane would be wide enough with enough shy distance to any curves that the other truck could also travel um, and remain in lane in that case. The trade-off with that is that that could require more right-of-way to be purchased. And so I want to balance those two things. Maybe we don't follow our design preference. We've just make sure that we can get one truck through very safely and very conveniently. So I think, I, I hope that is responsive to your roundabout question, but we absolutely can, it, uh, design a roundabout that will service all of the different trucks. Uh, if you're interested, I can provide you some video of a roundabout constructed in the Northeast that is right next to a truck distribution center and has hundreds of trucks going through it each day.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Brian. And I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, that that does speak to the concern. And I'm glad that you guys have some confidence that that you can work with those individual businesses, uh, along the corridor to make sure the access for the vehicles they need to get through are there.
Yes, and we're familiar with Roseboro, for example, having, uh, glue lamb beams that extend well past the end of the trailer. And there will be tail swing there. Well, so we will, we'll be able to get that information and a design specifically to it and allow a bit of buffer beyond that. As far as your question about, um, the impact to right-of-way purchases, first of all, I would say that given the cost of this entire project and our phasing plan, that this is going to take many, many years to construct. And our phasing plan specifically identifies that widening of the roadway is in very later phases. So how long will that be? I can't predict. But it clearly is a situation where with the limited money we have going forward, we're going to want to stay within the existing curb width and the existing sidewalk locations and build inside of that envelope. So there will be no right-of-way purchase to widen anything in the early stages. Exactly when that transitions is dependent upon our, what kind of funding we have, uh, coming in. Um, they, you know, but, but the key safety enhancements are able to be accomplished inside the existing curb.
Yeah, I'll draw real quick attention to your chat window. Make sure that you're not using the chat, chat window for discussion on the issue. Commissioner Buck, did you have additional comment?
Can I just clarify what I think, what, what I heard you say, Brian? And I just want to make sure I'm clear. So what I, what I heard you say is, in the initial phases, you feel that within the existing curb, um, we can implement, we, we can implement these safety features, uh, later phases that may, may include purchase of round, uh, of, of right-of-way. Um, would, they would come later and i- if what that, if I'm understanding it correctly, that that would also mean revealing what's already been put in place, how is it working? And, and learning from what we've already done in those earlier phases, as well as at that point, going back to the businesses at that time and saying, okay, this is what we're looking at. This is what we've learned. Let's, let, let's review this and what the impact would be. Is that, is that what you're saying at that point, um, would be the process?
Every single project will have its own review of what it can do with the money it has and what the objective of that project is. As a, as a professional engineer, I don't just take the initial idea without running it through an investigation of what's, how does it apply best today? Um, I think you may have been alluding to, well, if you do certain things between the curbs and that solves the safety problem, well, will you want to come back? If I'm putting too much into your intent there, please let me know. Um, but we certainly would be looking at, well, what is the next step and what benefits do we derive from it? And, you know, it, the, the city and ODOT have an interest in providing a safe facility for all users in the corridor. So that's freight, that's automobiles, that's people walking, people biking and using transit. So the stuff that we've planned for future phases, in part because of cost, in part because of impact, are the types of activities that will improve the walking and the biking and the transit user, uh, situation. Those are important. But we can't do all of it at once. So that's. But we can't do all of it at once. So that's why we've chosen the phasing approach that we've chosen. Um and if Molly or Emma is able to locate the actual phasing plan, that might help illustrate um this situation. The the right away to add in those bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Is about four feet on each side. And it would be purchased through and a a a land appraisal process. And if there are businesses that lose parking spaces because of that. Then there could be efforts to redesign the parking lot to enhance the uh numbers of parking spaces or enhance circulation in some fashion. That's not a promise that we can achieve that, but that was the kind of thing that we would definitely want to try and do and help. A a business or property owner to to accomplish. In certain cases, that won't be possible. And so those, each individual parking space will be valued monetarily. And that property owner would receive that compensation in addition to the actual cost of what the land is valued at. And those would go through an appraisal process. It's not city staff who decides those numbers. We would have a a certified appraiser or a registered appraiser accomplish that. I think Christina had some additional comments that are relevant to Commissioner Buck's questions.
Yeah, and it actually picks up really nicely with where you left off um. Brian, if that's okay, um Chair. Um I wanted to provide a little bit more information about business impacts specifically around the um. You know eminent domain process when Brian's talking about an appraisal process and that that's a, it's a very um. Specific process for going about eminent domain. When I say eminent domain, of course, the sometimes eminent domain ends in a court order. Exercising the power of eminent domain, but more often um those processes you follow in the eminent domain. Um statutory procedures and in ODOT's regulations just provide the format. For the city to work through the steps with a property owner to arrive at what the um fair compensation for that right of way is. Um and so it's not always like, you know, I don't want to make it seem like this big scary court thing um. When Franklin, for example, was um developed with its roundabouts. The city used a relocation um contractor and uh right of way agent. And most of, you know, few of those went to the point of a court order, um if any, I don't recall the exact number on there, but um. You know, was worked out with the property owners or their, you know, representatives. And then also, if a business happens to need to be relocated, I I think you may have received public comments from individuals or business owners. Who were concerned that their whole business may be unable to be accommodated with a roundabout or or potential design. There is a a state and federal law known as the Uniform Relocation Act. And that um requires certain formulas for paying businesses. Um their moving expenses or relocation expenses based on um formulas or a fixed. Their actual costs are a formula based on a fixed rate. So there are protections under the law. Um for businesses if they have economic impacts that result in their displacement um due to a project. So I wanted to make sure that 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 information is known to the commission as well, because you did get a lot of those um concerns in your public comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Buck, did you still have additional comment? Commissioner Buck, did you still have additional comment?
Um not at this time. I think uh if. You guys provided a great amount of uh of feedback. Thank you, Christina. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Um. So I'm gonna just take a minute and and listen to some other comments and kind of think about what I had to say and. Kind of form formulated, but I appreciate the information and 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 what I hear is that. That you guys share some of those values and um and and that that means a lot. So I appreciate that.
Chair, I'd just like to jump in for a minute and discuss the chat window. The public, members of the public. Um need to refrain from entering anything into that chat window unless it is specifically. Um a meeting administration issue in the same way that if you are attending a meeting in public. Um a meeting in person at City Hall, you're not permitted to stand up and shout at the Planning Commission. Comments in the chat are out of order and the same in the same manner. This is not a public hearing tonight. This is the Planning Commission's deliberations. It is a public meeting. A public meeting means that the public um is invited to. See all of the decision making being made out in the open, but a public meeting is not a public hearing in which the public are always invited. Um to speak directly to the Planning Commission. So continuing comments in the chat box are out of order um and are not permitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Quavilla.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um. Uh first of all, wanted to say I appreciated the comments of Commissioner Gill and the response um from staff. Regarding uh the funding. Um interesting words that I heard tonight from uh our city attorney. Regarding the facilities plan, the two words that struck me were binding and mandatory. So it's seeming to my understanding uh that um if we approve this, that it is. A binding and mandatory plan that will be the rule that is adapted. Um in methods that uh um are shown on the adaption plan and have been described by uh. Uh Mr. Barnett and others, but uh that the actual design plan is binding and mandatory. Okay, um a couple of other things I'd like to, I would like to bring up here. First of all is um. I did uh write that position paper with the idea of getting all my concepts out um. To both the public and to my fellow commissioners and to staff. And not take up a gazillion hours of uh folks' time to describe them. And uh not describe them as well as I could by thinking through them and writing through them. But there was uh one item that I did uh did want to bring up that was in relation to that. And that was the idea that, and thi- this is my experience with roundabouts. Um I uh oftentimes um. Drive down Mill Street and take a left on to South A Street to go visit some of uh wonderful properties. Uh and wonderful businesses uh on East Main and um a number of the folks who've commented, I I um. Enjoy your businesses and I hope they are successful in the future. But the one thing I noticed about the, when they deleted the signal at um Franklin Boulevard. That suddenly the traffic across the bridge was continuous. And now I, it is to the point that I no longer go down Mill Street and take the left on South A. I actually go over to the Parkway first, crossing Mill Street, go over to the Parkway and then take the left at the signal. Because finally, there's a break in the traffic. So that's one of the things I wanted to point out is that um. Is that uh the roundabouts facilitate continuous traffic rather than providing the breaks where you can actually have. Uh times that people uh who on side streets can enter and exit. Uh pedestrians can cross, bicyclists can cross, et cetera, under some of the uncontrolled intersections. Okay, so then also, um I'd like to go ahead and sh- share that concept with um. Uh it is page. Exhibit A one, page seventy-three of one oh seven. If that could be brought up on the screen, I want to continue my discussion with that photograph. Could staff bring that up, please? Exhibit A one, page seventy-three of one oh seven. Again, I'm sorry to take up so much time. I on on these, I I realize that everyone's. It's been a long process, Main Street. I'll begin the, a brief description on it. It says um. Under that, it says consentor left in access to properties on Main Street that generate large volumes of traffic, et cetera. The current example shows how. That um overlapping turn lanes. On onto local public streets could be provided so long as the turn lane would not overlap and compete with storage for another turn lane as shown in figure twenty-seven um. Uh you haven't got the page up yet. It's a photograph. It's exhibit A one, page seventy-three of one. That's it. That's the, could you zoom into that photograph? If if we look at the 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 vehicle and very, very near the center of the road there. That vehicle is beginning to enter Main Street in the same fashion that vehicles enter Main Street now. Being that he's coming out of an intersection and taking a left turn. However, he does not have what I term the, always did term, the chicken lane to begin to to. Pace himself into traffic, so puts himself into the center turn lane and then puts his left turn signal on and then enters into the left lane. That would be um towards, towards uh towards us. Instead, he is in conflict with both eastbound, westbound. And also the people who are in the turn pocket to take the left turn onto the side street that he's coming out of. So I don't personally see. A lack of danger in that situation. And I think that that's directly related to, a- again, um speaking holistically. Directly related to the amount of through traffic that's coming steadily as a result of the roundabouts not. Having actual brakes in traffic like there is with a signal. And the idea that there is no center turn or chicken lane there for that person to put himself into. So frankly, I think what you're showing here is a much more dangerous situation for people entering the side street to get. What I would call T-bone. So they're sticking out into the traffic and um. Somebody who's on their cellphone smack. So, okay, so that was uh one thing I wanted to bring up. The other thing I wanted to bring up, uh it doesn't have to do anything with the page any longer, is the phasing. And I think if we're talking about uh hundred and thirty million dollars over twenty years. And our design is going to be. Binding and mandatory, as again, as was described. I don't think in twenty years that we really know enough about how situations are going to be economically. Uh regionally, transportation wise, et cetera, that we should have a plan. That is binding and mandatory for that amount of time. When um for instance, we're writing new rules for transportation right now in the state that have to do with environmental concerns. Um we have uh significant transit improvements that are probably coming down the line. Um. Uh another thing in regard to the phasing that I find really bad about the plan frankly. Is this kicking the significant improvements of bicycle, pedestrian and transit. Down the road to much further periods of time. So what we've got is we've got, yes, we're gonna put a couple of roundabouts in, but we're gonna maintain the same curb line. Meaning that the bike lane is gonna be this skinny, narrow, awful little bike lane, which actually is like. Three foot eight inches wide, not five foot wide. If you take the gutter, the gutter pan and half the stripe away from it. Add a couple of catch base and knockouts, you basically got nothing to ride on. And then you've got these five foot sidewalks. So we're gonna live with that in phase one. We're gonna live with that largely phase two, phase three, phase four. Then if you also look at the final design plans, you see written all over the design plan that says. Oh yeah, we're gonna have a a six foot bike lane and a three foot buffer lane. This is, oh, the buffer can be reduced. So and it says continuously under every single cross it. On the phasing, buffer lane can be reduced given right away constraints. Well, we know there's right away constraints. I mean, the public is very much against any kind of right away takes uh for this project period. So basically what we're gonna end up with is we're gonna end up with the same high stress, dangerous pedestrian and bicycle. And we're gonna still end up with transit stopping in the lane, so holding traffic up, et cetera. So I find the phasing uh very problematic itself. So um again, uh I think I've spoken long enough. I'm I'm gonna uh say, please uh take a look at, if you haven't taken a look at my position paper. That explains these things probably better than I'm doing right now. Um I'd really appreciate it. And uh I really think that there's an awful lot of problems with this design and. To make it binding and mandatory is probably one of the largest ones. Thank you.
Want, want to clarify that comment. I think maybe it's being misunderstood. Um there's no construction level detailed design in this plan. So there's nothing. That that's not what you're being asked to consider for adoption. What is binding is the T S P facility plan. Is a adopted part of the transportation system plan in the same way that any other project description. Um in the transportation system plan that the city has already adopted. So it's the policies um and essentially the toolbox of solutions that will be adopted. Um and I think what's important um in response to public comment, the reason I was trying to clarify that is there's been concern among the public expressed. Regarding, well, what if ODOT doesn't follow the toolbox of solutions that's been proposed or the considerations in there when they get to actual design. Work. And in that regard, ODOT is required to adhere to the facility plan that is eventually adopted by the city council. And the Oregon Transportation Commission as a facility plan for this facility. So um there's no construction level details being proposed. Um there is a toolbox of solutions along with policies um that would sit at the top and govern. Future design in the same way that um, you know, you think of comprehensive plan policies govern zoning code amendments. Um in terms of what the specific land use regulations end up looking like stem from an overarching comprehensive plan. This facility plan is the overarching policy document to guide how those designs become developed later on. Um and if through a further design process, there's a design that's inconsistent with this facility plan, then the um. Coordination rules in state law require that the um design be changed or the facility plan be amended through a legislative process like the one that we're in. My apologies at that, if that um was unclear in my earlier comments.
Commissioner.
Thank you. It was very, thank you. It was very clear.
Thank you. Um go to Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. Um just as has been mentioned before, this has been a long process. So I have tried, um as we've been talking about the different things, um. I appreciate a lot of the points that have been raised by the commission. Um but I typed out what I'm feeling and how and where I'm at. So. Um bear with me as I will read it to everybody. Uh first, I'd like to acknowledge all the staff work that has gone into this project. A lot of time and research has been dedicated to this project and we appreciate that. We're lucky to have such dedicated staff in Springfield. I'd also like to acknowledge the community for taking time to show up and provide um input throughout this process. You're a valuable piece of the equation and of course, anything that we're talking about. Um I am actually going to be speaking in opposition of the proposal on the table. There have been a large, there has been a large outcry from the community about not wanting this project to move forward and I have to agree with them. Um we've had a lot of great um presentations given to us, but at the end of the day, I'm I'm just not sure that this is quite ready for us to move forward. Um a couple of the things that have been illustrated, safety wise, in fact, one of them was um Commissioner Quavilla about. The uh image that we all looked at. Um I want to reference, any of us could drive down Main Street and see pedestrians not actually using the pedestrian beacons that have been placed over the past decade. And I believe that providing the raised medians won't address the issue of pedestrian crossing in front of moving traffic. Instead, it could be argued that it just simply encourages behavior as there's a landing spot for them to um to meet. Um I do agree that community safety is a very high priority. I'm not quite sure if this project meets this objective quite yet. Um and would um strongly suggest that we explore alternative options that keep our community members safe. And allow for the logistics of the Main Street businesses, residents and travelers all in mind. Um I do appreciate the value of working through the issue and at this point, I'm, like I said, I'm not convinced that the project is ready to move forward. Um there are streets. Um, there are streets, busy roadways, business um sectors in various communities across our state. Um, I am actually in um one of them right now in Salem and uh for those of you familiar with Mission Street um up here in Salem, it has very similar median structure to what we're talking about now. Um, having conversations with some employees up here unrelated and I just realized in this conversation that, well, this is what we're trying to do. Um, they've told me they deliberately avoid that area because it is such a cluster. Um, I, after all of the the conversation that we've had and what the evidence we've heard, um, I think this is a a needed, um, I I still believe this is needed for our community. I just don't think, I don't feel comfortable putting this um presentation forward for uh the next step.
Okay, Brian Barnett. Is Brian Barnett uh part of staff?
Yes.
Please.
Yes, I'd like to address uh several of the the comments I've heard. Um, the the first would be related to the continuous flow of a roundabout. And indeed, that is true. Roundabouts are efficient because they do flow continuously. They uh allow a reduction in vehicle delay on average uh moving through them compared to a traffic signal. They also provide for slow-moving traffic in the vicinity of the roundabout because of the geometric left, right, left that one make must um negotiate while moving through the roundabout. Um, the same number of vehicles though are coming across that bridge from the Franklin Roundabout toward Mill Street as before and after the roundabout. I too have seen that there is continuous flow from that roundabout and I have been able to uh negotiate um left turns from there without um undue difficulty. I would suggest that the fact that that roundabout and Mill Street are about fifteen hundred feet apart and are connected by a bridge that has absolutely no driveways or other friction that would cause traffic to move differently. Um, it is essentially a cattle chute that allows vehicles to move unimpeded and there um the similarity to what would occur in uh the rest of the corridor that this facility plan addresses, and in other words, twenty-first street traffic signal to uh the sixty-ninth uh street traffic signal. Um, if those were converted to um roundabouts, if all all of them were converted to roundabouts, we would have uh twenty-first to thirty-second um three thousand six hundred feet of distance between the two roundabouts, which is more than twice what it is from Mill to the Franklin Roundabout. And the character of the roadway is entirely different, obviously. There are many um driveways, there are numerous cross streets and all of those situations create more friction in the traffic flow. And platoons of vehicles, which is, a platoon is the uh, the uh combination of all of the vehicles that leave a uh traffic signal when the light turns from red to green, everybody is closely uh bunched together and then as people um increase their speed, their following distance increases um in in the number of feet that they follow. Um, and so that platoon begins to stretch. And as people make turns on or off of the corridor, that influences that platoon. And with the kinds of distances that we're um considering here of intersection, it's roundabout to roundabout or roundabout to signal as the case may be, the um platoon will really break down and be non-coherent. It will, I'm sorry, I'm using a bunch of technical terms. Let me try uh different terms, but that platoon of vehicles will start to separate. And so it will be moving more or less randomly and independent. I think that that will very much make a difference in terms of the opportunity for people to make um turns uh onto the facility. Um, in regard to the um, the the diagram that Commissioner Quivula asked to be placed, um, perhaps Molly, we could put that back up. That might be helpful for the uh conversation. Um, in Oregon, it is lawful to make a, what I call a two-stage left turn, um which I believe is what Commissioner Quivula was referring to um with his chicken lane reference. And so the vehicle in this particular photograph or actually rendering has come from the side street where the gray vehicle is on the right. And they are in motion there, making their turn. Um, and they could pause in between the yellow lines and be safe and legal. Um, there is less space for that than what is um, you know, out there today. Um, and so it, but it still would be a legal maneuver to come to the center area and then move over into, in this case, the the traffic that's moving in the direction of the uh semi-truck. Um, it is not legal to, um, if if we look at this drawing without the median, it would not be legal for that vehicle to enter the center turn lane and then travel in it. You can enter it and pause and then can do your second stage of moving into the uh other uh direction to travel, but um you cannot travel in it and we do see that um certainly at different times. In in regard to Commissioner Bergen's comments, thank you for those. I I am interested in if you have ideas about what those alternative things to do to um reduce crashes in the corridor might be. Um, the combination of roundabouts and medians will cut our crash experience in half. That is a tremendous, in a numeric sense, of all the different kinds of crash mitigation actions that can be taken, that's a very, very high number. Many crash mitigations are much lower than that. And yet we still do them because the benefit and the cost outweigh uh the benefits outweigh the cost. Um, and I'm I'm not being facetious in asking the question, Commissioner. I genuinely want to know if you have an idea. I'm I'm willing to entertain it. Thank you.
Commissioner Quivula.
Again, I'm sorry to be taking up so much time, but I I I do think this is awfully important for the community. Um, another item that I did put in my uh position paper, but I did want to stress it again at this meeting, was in fact the width of the median. Um, if we are talking a situation where we're going to have to exact right away to do, I mean, take right away, buy right away from property owners who are likely not very uh happy with needing to sell right away. But at the same time, we need to have a center median of the same continuous width. So we've got this eight, ten-foot, twelve-foot median with a couple of shy lanes on the side. So we're talking twelve, fourteen feet wide. Why do we need to make, and and this is just, I I think it's, I think it's a um really unwise to to not narrow that median down to as absolutely as narrow as we could make it. If raised median is is a, is a solution, um, why should we make the median that wide? I I don't understand it. It it as relate to the community interests of maintaining these, what I would consider essential businesses for the city of Springfield. I think uh it was in the data that it was fourteen percent of uh city employment, if I'm not mistaken. So again, that was just another point that I thought was was missed as the width of the median being continuous. It just doesn't make sense.
Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for the for the question, Commissioner Quivula. Um, the idea of having a narrower median because you do not need to put vehicles in that median at that particular point has been considered. And we would like to do that where it fits. But where it fits is highly depended upon how many breaks in the median exist and are those breaks in the median used for left turn lanes? Because if we go, I'll just use, just just to make a a broad point, let's say we 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 make the median six feet wide instead of twelve feet wide or whatever it might be in the plan. If we make that median six feet wide, then that of course means that there's three feet on each side of the roadway that is unneeded because we have the width. And so your point is is absolutely on spot on. The challenge is, if we're going to provide these breaks at each of the um city streets, so that there can be a left turn there, and then there is also a left turn lane for people to make that left turn from into a side street, then that leaves very little distance between the beginning of that left turn lane and the end of the previous left turn lane for the next block. Um, and so there is a lot of what I call salmoning, where the where the median's going narrow and then it's widening out and then it's going narrow and that transition of narrow to wide or wide to narrow has a certain rate of change in that width that we have to maintain so that traffic can follow it and not have it too abrupt and then they can't maintain their lane as they as they drive down that lane. So the opportunity, as you describe, could be accomplished, but I think it would be accomplished at the cost of reducing the number of openings in the median. And we've heard very clearly that that's not a desirable outcome. So again, this is one of those balancing questions. If we could make it narrower by ha- by by having fewer openings and then we could have this six-foot um length of median or width of median for some distance and length, then we certainly would have that opportunity to do a transition from wide to narrow, carry it away is cross a a street intersection and then open it back up at the second intersection. So maybe every other block would be open. Um, that that I think would be the probable outcome of that kind of approach.
Other questions, comments? Okay, um, are we ready for a motion to adopt the recommendation or no? Uh, Commissioner McGinley.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and thank you, staff, for all of your work on this. Um, this has been, I've been on the commission for three and a half years now and we've talked about the Main Street Safety Project a lot. Um, I think it's always important to remind ourselves of the impetus for this project, which is that people are dying. People are losing their life on this facility. And I love when Springfield has accolades and we're first in things. I despise that we have the number one most unsafe street in the state in our community. People are dying. Children have lost their lives. This is very serious. And already many of the multimodal um and transit-oriented um pieces of this project have responded to public comment and have been removed. And so we're, it's not getting that much better for bikes and and pedestrians and transit users. Already, there have been concessions made to accommodate businesses and folks who drive cars. Um, I guess I'm feeling a little frustrated that much has been stripped away and just by inserting medians and the roundabouts, we can reduce crashes by half and we're not taking that. I mean, I just, I'm not really understanding. Um, I guess I also would like to hear what the alternatives are, like if not, if not these changes, then what? Because I do not accept keeping the street as it is because people are dying and they continue to die. And so I really would like to hear that in these deliberations, you know, if not the medians and the roundabouts, then what? Because we must do something about this crisis. I know that we will not make everyone happy. It's impossible with planning projects, but we can do something that will make everyone safer. And I think it's essential that we remember that. So I'm in support of the project. I'm also support in hearing other ideas from the commission for how we can move this project forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Commissioner Landon. So one of the challenges I see with this project, well, no, back up first. Thank you to staff. I think staff has addressed what was put in front of them, which is to address a variety of concerns as has been laid out to us every time this has been presented. And safety was the primary direction. That is also the primary direction of our partner in ODOT. Um, but so are businesses. So is keeping traffic moving. Plenty of people get irritated at how much traffic there is and how much time it takes to get from one end to the other and weren't happy with the the speed change. So there are a lot of, as we've talked about all night, so many competing factors on this street. And staff was asked to look at this street and primarily address safety with these other considerations. I think staff did that. I think the findings are true. I think they have supported uh their findings strongly. However, I am concerned with the task that was put to staff, which is to make this street be all the things. And I I think that that is a conflict and I think that that is a um narrow way to look for solutions in a community. And so conceivably, um, or maybe ideally, I wonder if or I would like to see city council take this information and digest it, but consider um, looking at alternatives off of Main Street for some of these things because from my perspective and watching what has happened in this community, the pedestrians who, especially the children and the family who were killed was what triggered this. And the real solution for pedestrians from my reading of what's being proposed now is not there. Um, it's it's in the last phases, as was pointed out. Um, it's the least important thing and clearly cut off to um keep property owners with the amount of property they currently have. So perhaps there is a way to take this information, but also look at, are there ways to make connections close to Main Street but off of Main Street for pedestrians and cyclists? And that could be a phased-in earlier thing that doesn't take necessarily property from business owners. Or it might in a different location, but maybe people would value it more um and support it more. Um, looking at um Main Street as the pass-through um is really problematic for me. I think actually Main Street is about the businesses. That's why people tend to go there. Um, except for people who live right off of Main Street. And so maybe there's a way to do more work to have people use the bypass that has been in existence for ages. And maybe a better solution to getting people to use that bypass is the roads and connectors that get you from the bypass to Main Street. Um, and we have seen that um Forty-Second Street and that whole intersection with one oh five is problematic and backed up. But if that were fixed, maybe more people would take one oh five out to Forty-Second and be closer to what happens on Forty-Second Street and Main Street rather than driving back and forth down Main Street just to get through. So I think that there are a bunch of solutions outside of Main Street that should be considered in this big picture and that none of And that none of what was done should be thrown away. I think it should be considered, but. But I think that one road is not necessarily the solution to all the issues that are happening there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to toss in a comment. I spent 20 years in the army traveling all over the world and seeing all kinds of interesting road solutions. I'm a big fan of the traffic circle because I don't think I've ever seen a wreck on a traffic circle. I'm sure there have been. I've just never seen it. And you know, Germany, those guys are crazy drivers. Italy, they're crazy. England, they're pretty calm. But I mean, if you can divide, you know, design a system where crazy drivers, and I'm not saying driving crazy is okay, but where people aren't getting hurt. I think that's worth strong consideration, you know, it's and I. Yeah, the city has to deal with compensating, you know, the people who are going to lose, you know, an ability to do business because. You know, a chunk of their land has been cut off because of the circle and I don't I don't know that there's a clean solution to that. But. Safety matters. That's all I have. Other comment, Jeff, Jeff Jarvis?
This is. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioners.
Oh, I was just going to mention, Chair, that I believe that is a member of the public and not a staff member and would not be able to comment in this deliberation.
Thank you. A reminder to the public that is participating, if you're not a member of staff or the planning commission for this meeting. The comment period is is not open. Other comments from those groups? Okay, are we ready perhaps for a motion to adopt a recommendation? Commissioner Quavilla.
I just wanted to again say to the public that. You know that we do really value their input, even though we can't hear them their input tonight. And again, the city council will be meeting. The second of May for this for the presentation and all your. Recent comments that you've written in are going to go to them and then that will be an open meeting that will allow public comment at that time. So again, thanks again.
Definitely, definitely. Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. I wanted to address, I don't even know how. The call to me of what are other solutions? I'm not saying I have the solutions. I'm not saying that anything in this plan should be put to the side. I think that we've done a lot of, not just tonight, but a lot of deliberation. We've had a lot of input, which is great. We've had. In my experience on planning commission, we've had more community input on this than any of the other things that we've talked about. And I appreciate that. I think there are opportunities for safety. Trust me, growing up in this community as I have, it breaks my heart every time I see something tragic. It has not been lost on me that lives have been lost here. I just think there are other opportunities for us to continue exploring before we move forward and saying, this is what we feel great about and we want to move it to city council. I think we have a great opportunity. Well, let me back up. Though we've been at this for a long time. It is important to make sure we get it right, not perfect, but right and get us closer. I think this conversation, though I don't find it easy. It's important for us to have to take us to the next step. I think there are other opportunities. Commissioner Gill had great. Suggestions of if this road can't be the fix all for our community. Yes, this is where a lot of the issues are happening. But I think there are greater opportunities and and maybe there are some raised medians in the middle, but not as many as there are proposed and. And pushing forward the safety piece is to the front, to the absolute forefront. And I understand difficult with. Grant requests and whatnot. I get that. I also think it's really important that we do prioritize what's most important. And figure out how we can get there in a way that serves our community, not just one specific group, but everybody. We have had a large outcry of businesses along Main Street and. If we aren't here to listen to our community business partners. I don't want to see them go away because when our businesses leave, so does the rest of our community or a good portion of our community. And we want to make sure we are increasing the livability. For those that are traveling on that Main Street. I would, you know, love to see a rendering of similar to what Daisy had been proposed a couple of years back where. There are some stretches in the middle where there's street or where there are trees, excuse me, some more green spaces. These this allows for opportunity and in trees in those. Middle sections would allow for the sunset to be blocked a little bit better to allow people to see the traffic control systems. If you drive up and down that road, regardless of the the crosswalk beacons that are there, there are not a lot of traffic signals to allow for people to. Slow down and and I don't know before. It was reduced to 35, how long it had been 40? I know for quite a long time, and so it takes time for people to get used to that. But knowing that there. I think that there's other facets of our community that we can pull in to helping the safety here. Are, you know. People that for lack of a better term, jaywalking or speeding or not observing traffic laws, written tickets and seeing more of that. I think there are multiple options here, multiple layers, and I just. I just don't know if we're there yet. We've made incredible progress. I just am not convinced that we're there and not to say that I don't believe in this and not to say that any one piece of. What we've heard has given higher and is given higher importance than the other. I think it's really important. This is a huge decision we're making and I appreciate that it's in bite sized pieces. For the community to adapt and for us to adapt more to what the community is giving input on. But at the end of the day, this will change the makeup of our community and we have to make sure we have one chance, in my opinion, to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. And I I want to say that I definitely appreciate all the all the work that staff has put into this and. And while I've only been on the the commission short time, I do appreciate. That a lot of work went into this prior to me, me joining you. You know, one of the things that I heard. Brian Barnett, you know, mentioned is if there are specific suggestions or thoughts that he'd be open to that and. And one of those that that comes across to me is. Is looking at seeing if there's a way to separate. Intersections, whether it be a traffic, traffic light situation, or whether it be. A roundabout situation. Separate those from pedestrian crossings. The roundabout at Pioneer Parkway and I guess that would be MLK or is that? Anyway. The down there. Harlow Road, I guess it is. The there's a pedestrian crossing right at the edge of that. And as a driver, it always makes me nervous because as I get into there. Travel as I approached the roundabout traveling south. And I'm going to continue through the roundabout traveling south. I have a lot that I have to pay attention to. I have to be aware of what's happening on my left. When it's safe on my left, I have to be aware of what's happening on my right and I'm. Into the and I'm starting to to make that turn. And monitoring those traffic on my right before I can take a look and make sure there's no, there's no pedestrian there as well. It it becomes a lot if if those crossings were moved back a little bit. Away from there and giving giving drivers some opportunity to to see those and slow down. I know in other parts of the country. The notifications happen 30 yards or so before those crosswalks. That's something that's always stood out to me as a driver and. And makes me nervous. So that that's just my personal experience. I don't know. How that fits in the validity with all the studies. But when you when you mentioned specifics. I thought I would throw that out there. Is that something that's always been on my mind at that particular roundabout? And so. Whatever our solutions are, I think the more separation that we can create for our pedestrians and cyclists from. The the traffic areas specifically when there's there's a lot of transition. I think the better. There's. It's done a lot of different ways throughout the country for a lot of different reasons, but. I think the the guiding principle is to try and separate out those spaces. So that that's just one piece that I wanted to put out there. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I appreciate all the comments. And. And yeah, I know this is this is not easy. And even though I've been here a short time, I can appreciate the difficulty. Of of the task and as Commissioner Commissioner Gill mentioned. We're trying to fix a lot of things. And some of those are in conflict. And so being able to really take a look at how you separate those things out, I think is important. And as Commissioner McGinley said, people are dying and we have to be aware of that because it's not just pedestrians. It's there's a lot of rear end and T bone accidents that are happening and those those are creating injuries. As well. And so I just want to throw those those pieces out there. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to throw in a follow on question to what Commissioner Buck has has talked about that particular roundabout, you know, that's east of Gateway Mall. East Southeast. What's the traffic safety record for that? Does anybody know that offhand?
Chairman Landon, I can identify that that roundabout was opened in October of 2006. In the time. In since that time to now. I am aware of one crash that involved a fatality. In fact, there were two fatalities. The circumstances of that particular crash. Was a fleeing motorcycle and passenger. Fleeing the police and they crashed as they tried to navigate the roundabout at extremely high speed. And I believe there was also impairment involved. That's that's the one that stands out to me. There could have been another fatality, but I am. Doubtful of that. The crash rate there is similar overall of what a traffic signal might be and by comparison of volume. The intersection of. Pioneer Parkway and Q Street has essentially the same volume of traffic flowing through it as what does the Parkway Roundabout. And. When I the reason I said I think the crash rate is similar there of total crashes is because that is what the typical trend is of crashes. At multi lane roundabouts. They're rough roughly equal to signal, but they are. They can also be lower than signal. I'm not familiar with them being higher. But the real distinctive between a roundabout and a traffic signal is that the type of crashes that occur at at traffic signals. Are at acute angles. There are people running red lights and then having the typical T bone kind of crash. Or it's somebody turning left in front of somebody and so they get a. You know, you run into the front corner of the vehicle. Or you have relatively high speed rear end crashes occur. That high angle and higher speed than what you see in a roundabout is what creates a lot more energy in the crash and that's what leads to the fatalities and injuries. So even if the crash rates are exactly the same. A roundabout will produce far, far fewer fatalities. Definitely fewer injuries and. Some property damage crashes that might equal in total number of the crashes in a traffic signal.
I appreciate that input. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, perhaps do we are we ready for a motion? To adopt a recommendation? Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt the order and recommendation in the agenda packet as attachment two for this item.
Okay. Thank you. Can we get a roll call or I guess should I just do that roll call?
Chair, I believe.
You're correct. We need a second. Thank you.
Seconded.
Okay, motioned and seconded.
I would like to suggest one alteration to the order, if I may, and that is an oversight on my part. The additional. The addendum to your staff report is a separate exhibit than the exhibit. D that is listed in the order in the packet. And so I would recommend that if you are, if the. Commission is interested in adopting the order and recommendation as in the packet with the addendum that was published in exhibit E that you just. Maybe adjust the original motion to adopt the packet or the. Order and recommendation that is in the packet as attachment two with additional reference to the staff report and findings and exhibit D and E. And if you made that change to the motion, then that would ensure that the city council sees that additional staff response. To all of the public comments and discussion of those public comments in the staff report that's forwarded to them.
I am positive that I am not going to get that correct, but let's see, who made the original motion?
Chair, I can. Change my motion to. Move to adopt the order and recommendation in the agenda packet as attachment two. With the following changes recommended by Christina Kratz. Would that be enough or do we need to specifically call out? The the specific attachments that you referred to, Christina.
It's just it's a exhibit E.
Okay, with the the changes to exhibit. As additions.
Christina, is that okay?
Perfectly fine if you have a your original second or agree to that change.
Okay, I'll confess. Who was the original second?
I agree.
Okay, Commissioner McGinley was the second and concurs with that. Can we get a roll call on the vote?
Chair Landon?
Yes, ma'am.
How do you vote?
I.
Vice Chair Salazar?
I.
Commissioner Quavilla?
Needs work? No.
Commissioner Gill?
Hi.
Commissioner Bergen?
I for now.
Commissioner McGinley?
I.
And Commissioner Buck?
No.
So I wasn't tracking. Shannon, do you happen to know or somebody know what the total count was there?
I do. It's five in favor, two no.
Okay, unless I'm.
I counted four in favor, three no.
Were there three no's? I did not hear a third.
Commissioner Bergen, it was hard to hear what you specifically said, so maybe you could repeat your vote because that was the one.
Said nay.
Okay.
Sorry if I sorry if it cut out, nay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, four in favor, three opposed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Unless I'm mistaken, that is sufficient to carry. Do we have any commissioners with the report on city council meeting? Okay, do we have any business from members of the planning commission?
Chair Landon, I had a report on a council meeting.
Okay, please continue.
I attended the.
I attended the, I can't remember which day, March fifteenth, I think it was. And it was solely a work session. And there was conversation about a partnership grant to have the shared bicycles available to public to use. It was a fairly lengthy discussion. And the City Council asked for a lot of additional information, both checking in with the cycling businesses in the community on their support for it and the impacts to them. The impacts of where those things might be cited, awareness of the long, narrow shape of the city and how that might impact the access and use of the cycles. So they asked for a fair bit of work to be done before they move forward with that. And that was the only item on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other reports on City Council action? Okay, any other business from members of the Planning Commission? Commissioner Gill, McGinley, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I think a few meetings ago, I let you know that the, I shared the information that the Land Conservation and Development Commission was going to conduct a public hearing for the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Process. They held that public hearing on March thirtieth. And I just wanted to share the opportunity for a question and answer session being held by the Department of Land Conservation and Development regarding the rules that are being proposed and will be deliberated by LCDC. It'll be Monday, April eleventh from two to three P M. And I can always follow up with Sandy to send that information to the rest of the commission. But they're pretty significant land use and transportation rules, and think that may be of interest to the commission. Thank you.
Positive that I would be interested. So thank you. Okay, we also have one item of business from the Development Public Works Department regarding return to City Hall for hybrid meetings. Sandy, I believe that was yours.
Thank you, Commissioners. So the City Council, as you know, has been meeting in a hybrid format for a while now, where some councilors are coming into City Hall and some are still zooming in. There is some limited staff in City Hall, and most presentations are made remotely. There is a desire for the Planning Commission to start doing the same. And so we are targeting your next meeting of April nineteenth to be our first hybrid meeting. And just wanted to talk that through with the commission. So we have an idea of what to expect, and you know what to expect. We are planning to have a practice session with our chair and vice chair. Ahead of that, with the chair being in the chambers and the vice chair coming in remote, we're going to have staff be participants so that we get to see the different roles. So we'll try to work out some of the kinks and learn some of the lessons from council. But I just wanted to get given opportunity for you to ask questions or voice thoughts about going to that hybrid format. It looks like we will have a work session. I thought we would have a public hearing on a zone change, but that is actually not until May. So it will just be a another community engagement plan coming to you for your consideration as the Committee for Citizen Vol.
Commissioner Bergen?
You, I personally love the idea of hybrid. I'm actually, I mentioned earlier, I was in Salem. I'm actually in Salem for the Oregon Realtors Spring Conference right now. And we are performing hybrid as well. I feel like that's kind of the way of the world and hybrid, in my opinion, is here to stay. My question would be to you, Sandy, would the hybrid opportunity, if we individually came to, were able to be in the chamber in person, would that allow us the flexibility if we happen to be out of town for work? Speaking earlier, would I be able to hybrid, be a part of the virtual side of the hybrid and not have to have a consistent answer of, of where I'll be?
Yes.
Beautiful. I love it. Thank you.
It was easy. Commissioner Quavilla?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you, Sandy. I've attended a couple of the City Council meetings that have, have been hybrid. And I've found that the camera work in the, in the City Council, to me, is less than desirable. It's taken from a distance considerably from the council and attempting to get everyone in the picture and a, a lot of, of background too. And so it's even sometimes hard to determine who's speaking. It's sometimes hard to recognize. So if there could be some effort made to improve that, I sure would appreciate it.
The last night's council meeting, AJ was able to do a lot more of that camera work you're talking about. It was a noticeable difference where you could actually, she doesn't zoom in on individual councilors, other than last night Steve Mo was leading the meeting. But to the side where you could see a couple commissioner, councilors, but it did make a difference where you could actually see them in body language. And Shannon, I don't know if you want to add anymore about that, but she was at the meeting with AJ last night, helping to make that happen. So I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do that as well. It might take some practice, because it's, it's been a few, I mean, AJ's had several meetings to get up to it, but I think there is potential with the technology to do that. Shannon?
Yes, that's correct. And I have worked with AJ and, and been in a lot of trainings on how to use the equipment. Because we haven't met in person, has been a limited amount of practice with it. But I have been in the trainings since it was installed. And including last night was working in person with AJ, watching and learning the camera movements. So she did set some presets for council where it would zoom in on a half of the dais or the other half of the dais, depending on where the speaker is located, with the ability to zoom in on the chair or mayor, in that case. The, the camera does flip for public testimony as well. So that podium has some camera angle and also the ability to zoom or zoom out there.
Okay, Commissioner Bergen?
You. Not knowing the camera being utilized, I'm going to offer some very unsolicited suggestion. One of, the, the camera that specifically Oregon Realtors that I'm most familiar with uses as an owl, where it automatically zooms into the speaker and also has the, the landscape portrait of, or the horizontal landscape, or the, the landscape photo, video, excuse me, of the whole, wherever you want it to go. And then it automatically, if Commissioner Gill started speaking, it would automatically go over to her. If Commissioner McGinley started speaking, it would automatically shift over. So that might be something worth looking into, but it sounds like maybe the equipment we have is fairly new. So again, free suggestion from me.
Okay. Sandy, still yours?
So, so far, council has had, held other meetings in the chambers, including work sessions. And so we'll do the same, at least initially. I'm wondering if there is concern at all on any of the commissioners as to how close you sit next to each other? If you, if you all did show up, which I don't think you will, but is there a concern in sitting in the chairs next to each other? And if so, we, we'll just make sure we can get set up accordingly and maybe work with the cameras if we need to have more spread out. So a sense of that.
I am not concerned.
It's not a mine. I would say that I prefer to space out. I also say that and am planning on joining hybrid for the, or joining virtually for these meetings for the considerable future. I have a newborn at home and that, yeah, it's very exciting. And, but she has essentially no immune system, because she hasn't gotten her first round of shots yet. So I think probably wait a couple of months till she gets exposed to a little more before I bring that into the home. So I'll be joining, planning on joining virtually for at least the next several months.
I don't want to be out of order, but I just have to say, congratulations. We knew that you were expecting and didn't know that your baby had arrived. So congratulations. So excited for you.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Other thoughts?
All right, we'll give it a go. So next meeting, April nineteenth in the council chambers, if you so desire, otherwise through the regular Zoom links that will be posted at Springfield Oregon Speaks, meeting at six o'clock.
Okay. At this point, I adjourn the Planning Commission meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your input.